Please. Mister Henry. Victor, would you please read this in bur?
Yes. Father God in heaven, we thank you for this beautiful day and this time that you've allowed us to come together. God, we ask for your guidance, we ask for your wisdom, your instructions, put, put it in our hearts, God, to do the right thing.
We'll call it Anita.
Counselor Howard.
Here.
Counselor Locke.
Here.
Counselor Lorenz.
Here.
Mayor Portem Segola.
Here.
Mayor Becker.
Here.
A court is declared.
Okay, we have any modifications to the agenda?
Yes, sir, we do have three modifications to the agenda. Tonight, we would like to remove G two B, the Sanchez Park Discussion. We would also like to remove G two E, Discussion on Proposition HH. And we would like to add to staff reports, the Sky High Staff Report.
Like to make a motion to approve the modification to the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the modifications to the agenda, to remove G two B and G two E, and add Sky High to the staff reports. Is there any discussion? Anita?
Counselor Howard.
Yes.
Counselor Locke.
I'm.
Counselor Lorenz.
I.
Mayor Portem Segola.
I.
Mayor Becker.
I.
Motion carries to approve the modifications to the agenda.
Approval of consent agenda, minutes of regular meeting from September seventh, twenty twenty-three, and a review and approval of accounts payable.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda, minutes of the regular meeting from September seventh, twenty twenty-three, review and approval of the council.
Second. And moved in second to approve the consent agenda for the minutes of regular meeting from some, from September seventh, twenty twenty-three, and a ru- review and approval of accounts payable. Is there any more discussion? I hope not. Anita?
Counselor Howard.
Hi.
Counselor Locke.
I'm.
Counselor Lorenz.
Hi.
Mayor Portem Segola.
Hi.
Mayor Becker.
Hi.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, pro forma nations, communications and appointments. I appoint Andrew Ashley to the U R A.
He's not here tonight. So, but as you know, Mayor, Andrew was appointed by Rio Grant to be the representative. As things developed and we decided to look at what we were doing, we decided that we would really like to have an actual county commissioner on the U R A board. So the county commissioners are going to work through that. I believe how the Rats Lab will be their appointee. Andrew still wants to serve on the U R A. So, bringing him to a mayoral appointee will allow him to continue to serve and it'll get us a little bit closer to our required number of thirteen. Eleven, once we get to, oh no, I'm sorry, ten. Once we get this one appointed and we have one more that's interested, so. We're just kind of moving along.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Andrew Ashley to the U R A.
Second. It's been moved in as seconded to approve Andrew Ashley, appoint Andrew Ashley to the U R A board. Is there any discussion? Anita?
Counselor Howard.
Hi.
Counselor Locke.
I'm.
Counselor Lorenz.
Hi.
Mayor Portem Segola.
Hi.
Mayor Becker.
All right.
Motion carries to appoint Andrew Ashley to the U R A.
All right. Citizen comments and special presentations. We'll do citizen comments. City Council, welcome. Your unscheduled comments, please limit your comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at the same meetings. Do we have anybody that'd like to speak? Please step up to the podium, sign the paper that's on there and tell it to me, please.
Didn't put my glasses on. Hi. I'm Caroling Flattney. First of all, thank you all for your service to the community. I appreciate it. Here because I would love to see a dog park in Monty. And I don't know if anybody else is on board with it. I'm not asking for anything. I'm asking to help you get it. I went online and you can find donations for dog parks. Check it out. If you guys can donate land or property or the county or somebody's got it, you could do a fundraiser, somebody could set up a five oh one C three, start getting money from people for fencing. Again, I would look at the dog park for awning for a location. I want to do it all. I'm going to throw my hat in the ring. If somebody wants to call me, help me participate. I'm here and I'll put my, I don't want a cell phone or phone, but I have a text number and I'll put that down.
Yes.
And, um, any power? Do you have anything going on with it or any concern, any interest in it?
It's been a discussion.
Oh, good.
Nothing going on, not, nothing going on, being had discussion.
Well, let's watch it. You know, let's move forward. Let's make it a reality and not just a discussion. And have you looked into it enough to know about what sort of insurance we'd need, what sort of? Sure, not, but I am an expert because I go to dog parks. I was helping my dog for a prop, but she wanted Thursday night football. So, you know, it's like, no, but I'm willing to find out. And you know, every dog park you've ever been to, there are disclosures saying, you know, we're not responsible, the city is not responsible, there's statutes in place that should cover that. And if there aren't, then make them. I know that's what the council does, yay. Make laws that work for people. And I think a dog park would really bring the community together for donations, for fundraising, you know, let's do it. I think it's good for the community. Well, we can't take any action on it here tonight, but I'm interested in talking to you. I hope you send me a text and I, I'm, I'm pretty resourceful. So I hope you do. And that's it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Any other? You have no idea. Anybody else?
Had your moment to shine.
As it say, a commission. Okay. We will move on to scheduled appearances. Elizabeth Luhon presenting Montevista Outdoor Rec Video Instagram Story.
Hello, everyone. I'm Elizabeth Luhon. I am the co-owner of Vinrock Media, a marketing agency based in Alamosa. I've been in the community in the valley since two thousand and five. And I just want to say you guys set such an amazing tone for these meetings. I was on the city council in Creed for six years back a long time ago. And I know the tone you guys set means such, makes such a difference for the town and how people feel about engaging. So it's really just lovely to see this. So my marketing agency that I co-run with my husband Vince Luhon, who is a native of the valley, we work a lot with tourism destinations. We do a lot of work with the city of South Fork and the visitor center up there, as well as many other kind of flagship tourist organizations, Creed Repertory Theater, the Combray's and Toltec Railroad, RV Parks and things like that in the community, the heritage area. And so we want to support, what's one thing that's very important to us is to not just look at the, the places that, oh, we know tourists go there already, right? To, but to bring more outdoor rec and more tourists to the places that would, that don't see a lot of it right now or are considered pass-throughs. And then also to be sure there's very responsible, value-aligned tourism. So not just people are going to come and trash the place and move on, but we're going to contribute to the community in a meaningful way. So we're trying to connect with more communities to do that. And one way that we're doing that is offering a free video. So we're, we do video production. So we are offering a free video to area municipalities. And you, Montevista was first on our list. It was when I called Gigi and Unita, they were like, yes, let's do it. It was awesome to get this kind of response from them. So we've been working on it over the last few months. So this is a comp- a free complimentary video that we created for the city of, for the city of Montevista. When we talked, one of the major goals was to bring more awareness to the incredible outdoor recreation opportunities that already exist here, right? And this is a message that can go out to locals, to people who live in the region, and then also potential, potential travelers through the community. So we create, what, what we brought to the table was messaging strategy and editing. And then we use existing footage and photos that Anita put together, did a lot of work going out and getting all these photos. And then Gigi, you know, contributed her expertise and knowledge about the area. And so we were able to create this video. And I don't, are you able to play it? Yeah. So, so yeah, go ahead and let's, let's take a look at it. So I hope that you guys feel proud when you watch that video highlighting all the amazing things that already exist here. And so one of the reasons we want to kind of start this conversation is I believe that there's an opportunity to do more messaging like this and to reach even more people. So I wanted to share with you some work that we've done for other municipalities and visitor centers. So if, if, if you're interested in getting more tourism or getting your messaging out a little bit further, we have some options that can do that. For this, the visitor center in South Fork, we've gotten more than a million video views for them. So we've reached more than a million different people with messages about South Fork being an amazing place. Everything, what we do with them is we, we, we have two very key things. One is we only promote the off-season. So we're not trying to get more people here in the summer, right? They're, they're, they're booked up. They're fine with that. So everything we're doing is about getting their fall, spring, and a little bit of winter traffic up there. And then the other thing that we do is we do values-first messaging. So instead of just being like every other place in Colorado where we're just talking about how cool you can be getting, you know, doing cool outdoor adventures, we try to dig a little deeper than that. We talk about accessibility for all. So you don't need to be a twenty-two-year-old who's like super fit in order to get outside, right? Anyone can get outside. And then we also talk a lot about that. We love this net, the nature around us because of what it does for us, for our relationships with our family, how it makes us feel and how it connects us to ourselves and builds memories, right? And so we, we start with messaging like that so that we're sure that the people who are coming to the area are the right kind of people, right? Who, who are going to cherish the, this area as much as we do. So in the course of the last year, we've reached more than half a million different people for the town of South Fork. We've gotten fifteen thousand visitors to their website who wouldn't have gotten there otherwise. We've had generated more than a thousand requests for visitors' guides. And with our event promotions, we have doubled attendance at every event that we have promoted for them from their previous years to the years that we started promoting their events. So just getting a lot more of the right people to that community. So I, I would love to, if you guys are all interested in that, we're very connected, right? And I, I can bring in some, you know, kind of start the conversation more specifically what that would, would look like for you guys. But in the meantime, this is your video. You can use it in any way you want. We've given it to you in three different formats. One that works in a TV format like this, one that is a little more formatted for a phone, and then one that works on Instagram in a slightly different ratio as well. So those are all yours. So thank you so much for all the work we've done together and thank you guys. And I look forward to hopefully collaborating in the future. If you guys have any questions, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
So, thank you, Elizabeth, for being here. We thought it'd be important to have her here as the debut of the video. And Elizabeth called us and she says, I want to help you guys. And it was a result of the article last February that came out about the recreational economy for rural communities that you guys will hear a little bit more about here later on the agenda. And so Elizabeth recognized that with what we've got going and the opportunities to expand at Sky High, and then with our recreational engagement and working with, with S L V Go, that this would be the next step that could help push Monty along. And so I love the video. I think you just did a superb job and appreciate that so much. And as we get ready to kick off more of the R E R C, we'll be able to add and change, change the video and, you know, really show some people in action and what we're doing. So it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. U R A Tax Increment Financing.
Mister Andrew. I'm back. I come up a lot today. So you guys all had a handout that talked about tax increment financing. It was a one pager. I tried to keep it fairly simple. And tax increment financing is simple in theory and very complicated once we get into the depth of.
Reading.
Yeah. So, as we talk about tax management financing, what it's used to do is it helps us as the public bring in private investors to do infrastructure, housing, commercial upgrades and those kinds of things. And it helps offset the cost. As a developer, it's very expensive to build in a rural community. The ROI is usually reduced and it causes a hard time for me to find people who will come in and build new commercial facilities, especially when we're talking about, in some of our places, we're looking at over two million dollars in just infrastructure upgrades alone to get something to a piece of land. So this is a way to help fund and entice those things. So it can use to catalyze redevelopments and do all those things. The important part is it's not only about redevelopment. The U R A is blight management, right? Blank land inside the city with unusable infrastructure or a lack of infrastructure is still considered blight because it's something that detracts from the value and does not add value to the community. So this TIP fund is used for in placing infrastructure in places where it doesn't currently exist. A lot of communities use it in downtowns to uplift their downtown. And other communities use it to expand infrastructure and create new, either commercial or housing districts. It can be used for both. It can only be used by U R As and a couple of other entities which don't exist in the valley. The Urban Rural Authority is one of the few that can actually take this money. So what is TIP? You have a piece of land that is valued at, we'll go with three thousand dollars in taxable value for thirty-five acres. Give or take one of the pieces of property we're talking about. Okay? Once you place infrastructure on that, that property value increases. You put a building on it, the property value increases. You have a road and you have taxes coming in, that property value increases. Okay, so you have what the original, which is called the base value, and then you have the new value, which is after all the infrastructure upgrades. In-between is the increment, and that is something that the city, that the U R A can leverage to help entice and pay back investors for building property. So as you can see, every two years, the base can be adjusted based on what is done throughout the rest of the city. So because we're taking the increase in taxes, we will have to, if we, if you guys want to do this and move forward, if the county and all those agree to move forward on, let's talk to all the tax authorities. But they will continue to get what they would have gotten if we'd done nothing. If the value increases three percent, like it did this last year, or even greater, I think it was a lot higher in some places, okay? They, they would still grow those increases. They get the natural increase. But what they don't get until the end of the tip agreement is the increment between that base that they would have naturally gotten and what it's worth now. Because that's how we entice and pay back for infrastructure, public improvement, and those kinds of things. At the end of the twenty-five years, it sunsets. And then they begin to get all of the tax value and the U R A would look for a different area to improve or create the same one slightly differently. It depends on a lot of different things. So these are the people that we have to work with to meet this work. I've already had a couple of conversations with county. Sat down with the county administrator, the U R A has talked it through. And what I'm looking for tonight is, is it something that you guys want to allow the U R A to continue to pursue? This will be a drawn-out process. It will take some time. We're going to hire a consultant group that can afford with it because we've never done it before, even though we were authorized to do so. I do not want to go forward without having somebody who has done it in my pocket. I want a consultant group that can make sure that it's legal, right? We don't mess up any of the contracts. We do all of the assessments correctly and help the county make sure that we can make all of those things right as well. We have to talk to all the other taxing districts and they all have to agree as well. So there's a lot of challenges that would go into. But we can pay for things like public infrastructure, utilities, parking, stormwater, permit fees, remediation and municipal building upgrades. So these are all things that we can do inside the district and you can only do these things inside the taxable or the tax, the tip district that you create. So if I created one in town, it only spits inside that boundary. I can't do stuff outside of that boundary. Like if I do it outside of downtown, I can't then go upgrade downtown with those funds. That'd be a separate district. So I can go more into detail or I know that if we continue, we'll have to sit down and have a work session to kind of talk through where we're looking at, what the property currently sits about. But again, before I go down this route, both with staff time and with the U R A, I wanted to make sure that it was something you guys were okay with us pursuing because it affects your guys' taxes as well. The one thing that I want to make sure I point out is kind of like some of the other viewpoints we talked about. There's not a risk as far as you don't pay the increment, it doesn't exist yet. Okay? So like when you create it, that first year you get nothing because they haven't paid taxes on it yet. Once they pay the taxes, then it's paid in reverse from the county back down to us. So we're not going to pay any developer upfront. It'll all be done in arrears. So that way we're not like, hey, it's a million dollars increment. And then it never happens. You don't actually get paid until those improvements are made and they pay the taxes on that improvement. So other than that, which is a normal question, do you guys have any questions on it?
Okay. Can you set up one district at a time or can you do like two, just ask?
The one we're looking at right now, I, since we've never done it, I would only want to set up one. And then I would like to see it like start moving along. Some of the things that I would like to see funded with it would be a full-time position inside the U R A because we don't have the capacity to manage that as well as everything else. So part of it is kept for administrative costs, to usually it's around twelve percent. It's kept for administrative costs. Some goes to the county to pay for their assessors' time to do the parts that they have to do. Some will stay at the city to pay for the city has to do. Then the rest can go to the U R A so that they can pay a full-time person, pay an attorney and any other consultants and those kinds of things. So I don't want to do one to start off with. Power Springs has sixteen. So you can definitely set up more than one. So I don't need a vote. I just need like, you'd like me to keep doing this.
Keep doing it.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, DJ.
Thank you.
Discussion on placing the I G A with other municipalities and all counties of the geographical area of the San Luis Valley of South Central Colorado. San Luis Valley, which will impose regulations and procedures upon any entity or person attempting to export water from the San Luis Valley to areas outside its boundaries and from the Rio Grande Basin for public hearing on, on November second, twenty twenty-three agenda. Does yours?
It's jeans.
Mayor, Councilman, this is something we've been spending quite a bit of time on going through and seeing where other municipalities are. I was at the cog meeting last Thursday. We went nonstop for three hours talking about this with other members of, the members of cog and where we were with the municipalities and the county. And today I had just within the last hour or so, Gigi and I were on with Barbara, who is the leading attorney for the cog implementation of the necessary steps to have the organization set up for regulating and limiting the export of any water in the, from the San Luis Valley by any end. I think that there are, there are three things that we're having to do here. There's the ordinance, enabling the town to designate matters of state concern. And the I G A, the intergovernmental agreement, which can go at any time here. We can combine if we want to and all the stages, but I think where we are right now is to get the I G A done first. And then there's finally the third thing is the matter of rules and regulations. And this is where things get rather interesting, let's say. It's going to take some work trying to clarify what the responsibilities are of the city who may receive the application for this. And the planning board of the, of cog, which may even be members, made up of members of the council, one or two members of the council here. So I think where we're going for the November meeting at least is to, and we could go ahead probably and set the hearing on the ordinance itself. We got to give notice. The notice has to be not less than thirty days before the hearing. And there's also an hour limitations, not more than sixty days after the, the des- the ordinance and so forth. So we've got to be operating under those strictures. But I think we could at least go ahead with the I G A agreement by our next meeting. So far, the way it's structured is that it's been passed by the four counties. One municipality that we're aware of has passed it, which is Alamosa. And I assume all the other municipalities will be joining in on that. So I think that's the status of where we are right now. And Gigi might want to venture something into that whole equation, I don't know.
Well, it's just kind of, you know, we had Jeff Wilson or Williamson speak a couple of weeks, a couple of meetings ago. He's our water attorney out of, out of Denver. And the you know, I think it's, it's important to show that we are collectively supportive of this. It's hard to tell what the ramifications may be thirty years down the ro- down the road and if this is really beneficial or not. And I, and I, I don't think she gave me the greatest answer when I said, so what happens if we don't do this? And there seems to be more of a concern about potential corruption of a, of an entity, you know, a municipality or a it'd be a municipality because all the counties have already signed on to it, that they could somehow be bought off to sell a chunk of the water, which I can't quite connect those dots. Gene, since cities don't sell their water. And, and these projects will likely take part in the county anyway. It's kind of a cumbersome process. It's expensive. The, the fees, it's set up so that the applicant is the one having to pay for it. So as long as we would be, we, the city would be kept whole, if something like this did come about, then we're then I think we're okay with it. So it's just new water we're treading in, so to speak. New water we're treading in, so to speak.
I think one of the things we were concerned about, I was concerned about is what kind of administrative burden. It might place on the city, uh, and we were talking about that. And um. The, uh, what she said is that the way the application would go, we could ship it straight to the planning board. Uh, and uh, but we were a little concerned about, well, what comes back from the planning board to the city that. Would involve a decision by the city that would be subject to review. On a, uh, what they call a one oh six action, whether the city's decision was arbitrary and. An applicant could challenge us in court on that, but uh, those are some. Those are some of the evolutionary things that uh, we've gotta really kind of work through, and this is a brand new. Um, thing that we're doing, but the bottom line is to uh. Uh, erect procedures concerning uh, the. Uh, export, possible export of any water from the San Luis Valley, which. Uh, have to be done according to the statutes uh, under ten forty-one. So that being said, it's uh, when we get into the details, it's far more complicated, but that's, that's where we are right now.
Do you have a copy of the I G A available?
Yes, and would, if you, would you like to see that?
Sure.
Yeah, as long as it's not two hundred pages.
It's not, at this point, it's only about three page. I think it, uh, I think it would stay, the I G A is. Thank you, rules and regulations are known.
Can that just be emailed to us?
Yeah, I can do that by email, sure.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Why some liquor renewal? Nita?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I would ask at this time that council adjourned, or excuse me, recessed the city council and reconvene as the liquor authority board.
So done.
Thank you. Uh, the Colorado Legislature has determined that the. Issuance and supervision of the liquor license shall be close, both closely regulated. City Council of the City of Montevista, Colorado. Is the liquor licensing authority for all license issued within the City of Montevista. And this is charged with carrying. Carrying out the state delegated duties, the following procedures and designees. To enhance the efficiency, prompt and responsibility performances of these important duties by city council. Before you, it's. Excuse me, before you is an application. That is with. Excuse me. That has been brought to you by C F Altitude LLC, doing business as Alta. Number six, three, three, nine, located at ten twenty-five Park Avenue. It's currently the Shell Gas Station. C F Altitude has submitted the application required by the State of Colorado Liquor. Licensing Division. They have followed all the regulations, they have completed all the application process. They have also completed an alcohol petitioning service. Which is included in your packet. I've spoken with the City of Montevista Police Department, at this point in time. There is no denying of an alcohol license. That they would see that would need to be denied at this point in time. So before you, I asked that you would approve. The liquor license for beer and wine for C F Altitude LLC, doing business. As Alta, number six, three, three, nine, and you do have the applicant present if you'd like to ask them questions.
To find out how they did all that. Yeah, so if he wants to go ahead and tell us how you guys did all this, that would be.
Thank you, sorry about that. I couldn't quite hear you, so I didn't know if you were ready for the petition or not, but I'll gladly go through it. Uh, I counsel, thank you for having me. My name is Brian Turner, currently an employee of Alcohol Petitioning Services. Um, prior to that, I worked twenty-eight years with the Liquor Enforcement Division and recently retired as the agent in charge. So we conducted a survey. The survey over- overview is for a fermented malt beverage and wine retailer license. The survey was for. To verify reasonable requirements and desires of the neighborhood. The applicant again is C N F Altitude LLC, doing business as Alta six, three, three, nine. With their location at ten twenty-five Park Avenue, Montevista, Colorado. We use two circulars, circulars were over twenty-one years of age. Each circular. Uh, went around the neighborhood and petitioned. They were wearing a. Brand shirt that had the A B S apparel, as well as the name tag with the individual's name and the company name. When we went to each resident and business, we had a map of the designated area that was provided by the Town of Montevista Clerk's Office. And it described the boundaries of the defined neighborhood. The petition to the local licensing authority of the Town of Montevista, it included a section where people could. Contacted, indicate their support of the license, um, or their opposition to the liquor license. We also had a tally sheet for those that did not want to sign a petition. Each positioner, um, who signed the petition indicated they were either an owner or manager of a business or residence. Located within the designated map area, and they were over the age of twenty-one. Each signature was freely and voluntary given without any type of influence from the circular. The petition was done on Wednesday, August twenty-eighth, and there was two petitioners involved. The summary of the signatures obtained, there were six businesses and sixty-nine residents that signed the petition for a total of seventy-five signatures. Details of those signatures, the signatures in favor of issuing the liquor license, there were six businesses and fifty-one residents for a total of fifty-seven. Signatures opposed, there was no businesses that were opposed, but there were eighteen residents that were opposed. Statistical analysis in favor was at seventy-six percent for issuing the liquor license and those opposed was at twenty-four percent. Some details of those um, in opposition, one person did list that was a resident, they were too close to a school. Uh, the remaining seventeen did not provide. Any type of reason for putting no on the signature. So a summary of contact attempts. Businesses, we attempted to contact eleven, it's three point three percent ratio of the total contacts. Residents was three hundred and twenty-three, that's ninety-six point seven percent. Details of those contact attempts, there were seventy-five signatures, it's a ratio of twenty-two point five percent. Not at home was two hundred and twenty-five, that's sixty-seven point four percent. And not willing to sign the petition were twenty-nine, it's a ratio of eight point seven percent. And owner or managers that were not available were five, and that's a ratio of one point four percent. Actual people contacted were eleven businesses, which is a ratio of ten percent. And there were ninety-nine residents, ratio of ninety percent. Summary of the ratio of signatures to contact attempts. For businesses, there were six that signed it and eleven attempts, that's a fifty-four point five percent. Residents were sixty-nine with attempts of three hundred and twenty-three, which is twenty-one point four. So an average of twenty-two point five percent of our attempts, people actually signed the petition. There were no disqualifying signatures, everybody was over the age of twenty-one and lived within the designated area. And for the statistical analysis for the needs and desires, one person did provide a reason why they opposed the application. In order to show needs and desires, the reason should indicate whether or not existing number of licenses is sufficient for the designated neighborhood. That reason does not fit the definition, needs and desire, they listed too close to a school, which is covered by a statute limitation of distance. A vast majority of the opposition did not provide a reason, this must be taken into consideration in evaluating the needs and desires of the neighborhood. If you remove the opposition where the reason is not known or doesn't fit. The definition of needs and desires, the following details is what you'll have. You'll have signatures of six businesses in favor, fifty-one residents in favor totaling fifty-seven with no opposition. So in favor would be one hundred percent, in opposition would be zero. Therefore, the final analysis of the needs and desire is somewhere between seventy-six percent and a hundred percent in support of issuing a new license. And then included with the report, for your record, is a copy of the map indicating where the circulars petitioned. A copy of the petition of the signatures obtained in support and opposition to the per minimal beverage and wine retailer. And the affidavits of the circulars, uh, for the signatures.
Thank you.
Oh. There goes, did you have questions for the real then with Brian?
No.
Okay. Uh, thank you for allowing me to come speak to you today. I wanted to hopefully answer any questions. I'd kind of have a prepared statement that I'd like to go through and then. And I, and I hope it answers all your questions, but if you have any more after, it'd be great.
Um, excuse me, sir. Hang on one second, we kind of have a procedural problem here.
Okay.
So. The gentleman that just spoke, was he speaking, was he hired then by Alta?
Yes.
Okay, alright, so council, you guys need to make an official motion to. To what? To come out of your council position. Um, take a vote, then take a vote to say we are officially going in as the liquor authority. For this hearing. So I think it's fine that the, we've got the statistic side of things. And then we've got the appropriate person then to answer your questions and, and go on from there. So make a motion that you.
Make a motion that we go out of council session and reconvene as the.
Local licensing board, and we can incorporate the. Uh. Testimony that's been given so far, but uh, in a quasi judicial proceeding like this. It should be uh, all sworn testimony. And people should be sworn to testify because. These things go up on uh, appeal to uh, the district court or something like that. Uh, then you are looking at the record that's been made, so uh. For the protection of the uh. Of the applicant and protection of the city, it should be formally done. And you should designate the hearing officer. Or it's gonna be the hearing officer.
And designate Jean Farish as the hearing officer.
Okay. So. I'm gonna, we'll open this and just.
Been moved to, if you know, they'll go out of. Council session and move it to the liquor license board. Is there any discussion? Nina?
Counselor Howard?
Aye.
Counselor Luck?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Proton, Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Well, at this point, we'll go ahead and open the hearing on the liquor license application. And uh, we're gonna pick it up from the testimony that's been given so far, not gonna make you repeat that. But uh, the uh, decision will be made uh, by the council after the hearing. To uh, to grant or deny the license, and if it's uh, granted, uh. Uh, and we'll have anyone testify, uh, first of all, the applicants themselves. And then the uh, uh, the opponents, if there are any opponents to it. And uh, if there are opponents to it, then we'll let the applicant rebut those questions. So uh. I'm gonna incorporate what's been said, so it doesn't have to be said twice. But from here on, let's pick it up, uh, exactly where you left off.
We, do we need to swear him in then?
Uh, yeah, let, let's, let's get you sworn on this. You solemnly swear. That the testimony that you were given this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so you gotta.
I do.
And state your name for the.
My name is Dennis Dirksy. Uh, it's spelled D I R K S E. I live at twelve thirty-nine West Lone Cowboy Drive in Pueblo West, Colorado. Um, I'm the vice president of retail operations for Alta Convenience. Um. I have Jasmine Salazar, she's our store manager, and if she had questions for her with us today, she has five years of experience in retail. Um, just a little bit about our background, just to, to kind of let you know who we are a little bit. I know you know, because we've been here for a while, but then. A little bit more about us. Um, I've been in the convenience store business for thirty-seven years and have been in a position to sell alcohol for several of them. Uh, we currently operate a hundred and sixty-one stores, um, in seven states and have thirteen hundred employees. Uh, we currently have a hundred and thirty-six beer licenses in seven states, seventy-seven in the state of Colorado. Uh, we are familiar with the beer liquor codes legally, uh, drinking age of twenty-one. Uh, ours were able to sell eight A M. to midnight. Uh, types of acceptable identification, which must not be expired. A state issued driver's license, state issued I D card, military identification card. Passport. Alien registration card. And as of. October thirty of two thousand eight, eighteen, which this was a challenging one, the digital I D. Is an acceptable form now, so uh, so that one's been a little bit more of a challenge with training, but um, but we've pretty much got it down now, it's been five years. A little bit about the outlet operation, um, the store is open from six A M. to ten P M. Um, store currently has nine employees. Um, the beer would be located in view of the register. We have passport cash register systems that are, that can scan I Ds. Um, our employee training, uh, we like to get everybody through the tips program, which is the uh, the state. Provided program that's out there, um, but we take it a step further. We have our own program that's run through, it's called retail training online that we use. And it's all, it's specific to the convenience store business. It uh, it goes over all the different aspects of selling to, selling alcohol and uh, what to look for in difficult situations. Um, we're a member of the bars program, and I'm not sure if you've heard of that before. It's an outside company that we source, they check all of our stores for tobacco and alcohol every month. And what they do is they send somebody who's between the ages of twenty-one and twenty-six into the stores. And they attempt to buy alcohol or tobacco. If the employee. Sells it to them without asking for I D., they get a red card. If they don't, to do everything they're supposed to and, and I D. them, uh, they get a green card. And for us, um, we wanna. Reward our employees, so when they get a green card, that's monetary value for the employees that they can use to buy stuff in the stores. If they get a red card, the first time they get a red card, we go through retraining and corrective action, um. The second time is when we determine the voice gonna be with the same one. Um. Our I D. for policing for alcohol and tobaccos, we ID. everybody. For every cell. There's, there's no in-between, no under fifty, no under forty, it's every person that buys. Um, and the final comment that I'd like to make is, if we ever have an employee who sells to a minor, and this is from the top of the company to the bottom. How that employee is terminated. You have any questions for me?
Pretty thorough, didn't realize it was so detailed.
Not, we gotta be serious about these things, it's very important.
Uh, I'm assuming that your sale maybe has been outlined in a diagram or something like that, where. Uh, through the liquor licensing.
Where it's gonna be located?
Where it's gonna be.
Yes, yeah.
Where are you gonna make the sales and service and so forth?
Yeah, that's part of the application. Do you have, first of all, are there questions from the council?
I have a question, and. Everyone else in the room may know this already. Some of the showmen are sort of, fermented malt beverage. Is that just another word for beer, or is there more? To that?
No, it's, it's beer.
Just beer?
Yeah, it's spirits.
Nothing more than beer?
Yeah, but it's uh, it's an application for beer and wine, so we're able to sell wine and.
Right, I, well, I, I, but I know what wine is.
Yes.
Just wanted to.
Yeah.
You know, make sure that, that that was there.
What else?
We are now in the era of more than, ferment and malt beverages used to be like three, two, but now.
Three, two alcohol content.
Yeah, but it's, it's above that now, and it's classified as beer.
You may have to explain all this to me, though.
It used to be that there were only three point, three point two percent alcohol that was sold in stores. Now with. The new beers, there's higher than.
So you'd be able to sell a higher percentage beer than that?
Yeah, we have, and the law changed was, this is the third year. Where three, three point two percent is, it used to be three point two percent in grocery stores and convenience stores, and then liquor stores was six point. Yeah, we have. And the law change was gonna, this is the third year where three, three point two percent is, it used to be three point two percent in grocery stores and convenience stores and then liquor stores was six point, six point.
See, you could sell, you could sell these specialty beers, craft beers.
I think everybody is familiar with the fact that the craft beers have pretty much taken over the market business.
Yeah.
Do you have other persons who, uh, wanna testify or?
Well, I brought, I brought Jasmine with in case, cause she's the outlet manager in case you guys have questions. She didn't have anything prepared, but I wanted to make sure she was here for you.
She's our local.
Yes.
Contact.
Yep.
My concern is our liquor stores in town. I mean, I know this is all legal and I'm, I'm not saying that I'm against it. I'm just concerned how it will impact. The liquor stores that we have here that have been here and have served our community. And I, I realize that they have put aside a hard liquor. But. I, I don't know. I don't go in there and I don't, often enough to really know. What, what their specialty is, what their sale is, what they're, you know, what they're making the most money off of. But I certainly don't want to see.
Okay, see, that's a cease.
I don't wanna see these. The relaxation of the regulations. Of where. Permented malt beverages and wine can be sold. Put these. Two liquor stores out of business.
No.
You don't think so?
I think, I think one thing Martha to think about is too, is there's a lot of travelers and this is a heavy tourism area.
Mm-hmm.
Having come here since two thousand one. And, uh, when we bought the Cliff Bryce store over there and. And one of the things we've kind of learned is, is a lot of people that are traveling, they won't make two stops and they're gonna stop to get gas. So, so that's more revenue into the city, you know, with taxes too. So it's, it's sales that are already, are not being captured. Now that I think the, the argument goes the other way that hey, maybe it's more local people might buy their beer there. I mean, I'm not sure how that all works. It's a, it's a part of our business. It's not. A huge part of our business, but, uh, but it's important for us to be competitive.
Well, like I said, I'm, I'm not against it. I just wanna make sure that. We're not hurting.
Any, any of the.
The smaller, older businesses.
When, when the, when the beer laws changed, that was signed up by the liquor stores so they could get more outlets instead of having single outlets. They could have multiple outlets. So they can grow their business too.
What is your proximity to the next outlet?
Um, we're within legal distance. Okay. Yeah, I don't know the exact number, but it's.
It's over.
You're over the five hundred.
Yeah, we, we do, we do a lot of research when we wanna make sure we're within the parameters. And then the needs and desires more for the community to find out what the community really wants. If it would've came back and they. And it was, you know, they, it was twenty-four percent that didn't, that wanted it and seventy-six did, we wouldn't even have took it any farther.
Well, if I heard the percentages right. There were. Twenty-four percent against. And twenty-nine refused to sign. So that's well over fifty percent of the people that were asked. That were either against it.
You're mixing percent.
Yeah, also. Do you have the numbers off? It's in your packet.
Okay.
Yeah, so the. The number in favor. Were fifty-seven.
Seventy-six. Seventy-six percent were in favor.
Well, that was, I'm just.
Yeah.
But that was of the ones that signed.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Right.
Yeah. But you can't count the one that didn't sign. Cause they didn't go no either in Seattle. Yeah, it don't count.
And I, I can interject if. You'd like on, on that, then folks that did not sign.
But let's get you sworn, sir.
You bet.
You solemnly swear as testimony that you were given this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth, so I forgot.
Yes, I do.
And state your name just for the record again.
Yep, it's Brian Turner, T U R N E R.
Okay, you're, you're at what position in this?
Uh, so I'm, uh, employed with Alcohol Petitioning Services. And ju- just to clear up on those that don't, that didn't sign or didn't wanna sign. Um, so we have multiple options. Some individuals just, they didn't want to, um, be involved. They weren't interested in all, so. They just said, you know, I don't wanna sign it. He just lists me as not interested. And then others just really had no opinions. Uh, no opinion, don't wanna. Uh, sign anything, but I don't have opinion one way or the other. And then, of course, with the businesses, if there wasn't a manager listed, we listed them under, um, a manager or owner available. They were listed under those folks that were contacted, but didn't wanna sign.
Thank you. Okay, if that, does that conclude the applicant's testimony?
If there's no further questions.
Okay, if not, uh, we'll go to any opponents. Are there any opponents of the license? Do not see any hands, uh, therefore. Unless the council has further questions. We'll go ahead and close the. Evidence hearing of the application for the liquor license. And remain this matter to the, uh, city council for decision. The motion to back in this council.
Well, do they take a motion? Do they vote now as the liquor authority?
They're, they're going to, they're going to vote. As the city council. Based on the evidence before, and they should probably come out of the liquor license hearing. And then go back into council meeting and then take a vote on the application.
Make the motion to go out of liquor license hearing. Beyond the name city council.
Second, yeah. Second. You, it's been moved in second to go out of liquor licensing board. Go back into council. Is there any discussion? Anita?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Make the motion to approve the liquor license. For malt beverage and wine for CF Altitude LLC doing business as of the. Six-three-three-nine at ten twenty-five Park Avenue, Montevista, Colorado.
Second.
Been moved in second to approve. The. Liquor license to sell beer and wine for CF Altitude LLC DB. Doing business as Alta Fuel Number six-three-three-nine at ten twenty-five Park Avenue, Montevista, Colorado, eight-one-one-four-four. Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the liquor license. For CF Altitude LLC doing business as Alta Number six-three-three-nine located at ten twenty-five Park Avenue, Montevista, Colorado.
Thank you.
Very happy. Thank you guys for your presentation.
Thanks. For sure. Use your brain.
We'll keep that.
Sure. Thank you.
Does Jasmine have a business card?
Um, maybe not yet.
I have.
I guess. You can get your.
Thank you, Dennis.
It will go to resolutions. Twenty twenty-three dash eleven resolution adopting the R, R E R C action plan.
So first I'd like to introduce Xavier Campos. He is our near core person that we brought on board to take the R E R C project forward. Um, so he'll be the primary contact from here on. Uh, he started here about a week ago. Since then, he's been writing RFPs. He read the entire action plan. I think he might have been in some caffeine that day, but he had it all completed. And he started conducting meetings. He's been working with us for just over a week. Uh, he came in uniform before he started. Uh, he came to our first meeting. We also have Annie and Danny from SLV Go, um, as they were the ones that put together the, the action plan or the, uh, process for EPA. So you can read some stuff and then just read them.
So, um, Xavier, why don't you? You, you're gonna need to state your name for the record.
Okay.
And then tell council, just give them a little bit about yourself.
Should I be doing my? First name or my?
You can go by either one.
Okay. Uh, nice to meet you all. I'm Xavier Campos, uh, a recent graduate from Florida State and, uh. I applied for this job through AmeriCorps and, uh, I actually got the job while I was over in Spain. So I, I got back and I packed all my stuff up and drove from Tallahassee, Florida over here to Montevista, where I've been living for the last. Two and a half weeks and I, uh, I really like it here. I like here a lot. Enjoy working with everyone and I look forward to working with all of you. So.
Hope one or two of the senators.
Thank you. All right.
Hope you like it through the winter, Jay.
I will see it. Let's see. It's, it's not Florida. That's for, it's already not Florida. That's for sure.
Oh, don't you worry, Sam, man.
And he, and he is accepting invitations for lunch or dinner or hiking, Lauren, or, uh. He wants to learn the area and, and it's been a real pleasure. So he's saving here until like the first.
That sounds good to me. Okay, uh. Reading the title or just?
Okay.
Whole thing, okay. Uh, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash eleven. Uh, resolution of the Montevista City Council for adoption of the recreational economy for rural communities, community action plan. Whereas the city and its partners have engaged the Environmental Protection Agency. To develop a plan to leverage the surrounding natural beauty to help encourage economic development of the city of Montevista. And whereas the city and its partners have conducted multiple public engagements, meetings and surveys to gather input from the community and federal partners. And whereas a committee gathered and developed a plan that establishes community goals and action items. That will endeavor to drive economic development throughout the city. Whereas the city council of the city of Montevista agrees that these actions are desirable and achievable. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Montevista. To adopt the recreation econo- economy for rural communities. Community action plan of twenty twenty-three and direct the city staff. And community vol- volunteers to implement the action plan set forth in the plan as budget and resources allow. City council requests that the city staff and partners seek out and apply for grants to support these actions. Oh, uh. We make a vote.
Well, I make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash eleven. A resolution of. Montevista City Council for adoption of the recreational economy for rural communities. Action plan.
I second that.
It's been moved in seconded to approve. Resolution number two zero two-three dash eleven, resolution of the city, Montevista City Council. For adoption of the recreational economy for rural community. Action plan. Is there any discussion? Anita?
Counselor Howard?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Segola? Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven. Adopting the R E R C action plan.
So, on October eighteenth, um, and between six and eight PM at Sky High. Will be having a presentation for the community. Um, there'll be some light food room we provided. Um, and then we're gonna try to set some action committees, uh, to start moving those goals forward. Um, so you guys are all invited. Love to get you guys there, uh, so that you guys can see what the action, like what it can really do and what we can really see. So. Again, that's October eighteenth from six to eight PM at Sky High. Here's that.
Danny or Annie, do you guys wanna say anything? So there are two members of SLV Go in the audience and, um, they've been so supportive and helpful in this whole process and we're glad to be working with Annie and Danny on this. So thank you, ladies.
Thank you. This has been a lot of fun for this process.
It's in my, it's in the city council.
What's that?
It's between budget and city council, I think.
Make sure and put it on all the counties that.
You need it?
You're gonna, you're gonna earn your pay this month.
Be close anyway this month.
Contracts, agreements and leases mutual aid agreement with the Colorado Rangers Law Enforcement Shared Reserve and the Montevista Police Department.
You undercover chief?
Yes.
Um, good evening, mayor and council. Um, Chief Dean Felder had asked me to present this to you. Um, the mutual aid agreement before you is between the Montevista Municipal, excuse me, the Montevista Police Department and the Colorado Rangers Law Enforcement Shared Reserve. The Colorado Rangers Law Enforcement Shared Reserve, known publicly as the Colorado Rangers, is a governmental police agency in the state of Colorado. Colorado Rangers. Are sworn Colorado post-certified police officers who serve as force. Multipliers for law enforcement agencies throughout the state of Colorado. The agency is designed to allow law enforcement agencies to reduce duplicated costs for training, equipment and deployed. Of pol- of police officers by swear, sharing sworn officers by police agencies throughout the state. This agreement will allow the Montevista Police Department to use the Colorado Rangers during stampede. And any other events that extra enforcement is needed. The Colorado Rangers can also be used in case of any emergency that would ever strike the community. So with this being said, Chief Dean Felder has asked that the city council would approve the agreement. That would be a five thousand dollar a year and would allow for the city of manager to sign this agreement.
Uh, please, a mutual aid agreement between the Colorado Rangers Law Enforcement Shared Reserve with the Montevista Police Department and authorize Gigi Dennis to sign.
Second. It's been moved in seconded to approve the mutual aid agreement with the Colorado Rangers Law Enforcement Shared Reserve. And the Montevista Police Department and have the city. Is there any discussion?
Just for correction. You say five thousand dollars a year?
Yeah, that's what she told me.
Okay, our fee schedule says six thousand dollars a year. So just. For the record, so we can cover that.
Six thousand dollars per year. Okay. Anita?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Segola?
Yes.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the mutual aid agreement with the Colorado, Colorado Rangers Law Enforcement Shared Reserve and the Montevista Police Department. And allow city manager Gigi Dennis to sign.
Good, thank you. We'll move over to staff reports. Recreation's first. He's gonna wreck it.
I have a really short report for you all. Uh. Our, uh, activities are going great. Football increases and, uh, the numbers for every single sport. Uh, seems to be increasing. Volleyball's going great. Um, it's great to see council members out watching volleyball games. Watching football games, volleyball games, supporting the cheerleaders and whatnot. Um, recreation right now is going great. We're looking at doing some other things and starting, uh. More adult sports and so we're gonna try, uh. Flag football in October. Now I'll put a flyer out for that today, see how that goes, uh, with different teams and whatnot. We've already had teams. Contact us from Del Norte and from Center, uh, that wanna enter into our league. That's what we're really looking forward to that. But I have a really good report. One who up there just love dump tanks. This person will strip down out of their clothes into their.
Dumped.
Exactly. There you go. To get into a dump tank to get dumped in. Mayor Becker? Thank you for supporting the kids like that so much. They raised a lot of money. And, uh, um, with you getting in the dump tank, it was awesome. And, uh, I want you guys to know I did get my five balls and dunked it five times, so.
He didn't even have to try. You can tell he's an athlete.
So that's recreation for this month. We hope to have an even bigger and better report next month and that for you all. So that's recreation. Any questions? Got another duck taking for you.
Thanks, Derek. I appreciate that. Thanks, Pierre. You're a massive table that I will. I know people, man.
Kids connection.
Good evening, I have a super short report for you too, cuz all I have are kids. That's it.
Unintended.
Yeah, um, things are going as well as we could hope for, we are still extremely short staff. If anybody wants to work with kids that can stick it out for longer than two weeks, please send them my way, um, we did hire two. We had two interviews this week, we did offer positions to those two, hope to have them start next week but still have one position um, open. Um, we are seeing close to seventy-five every day after school, this week really picked up with um, enrollment and attendance. My little kid group started out the beginning of the year between fifteen and twenty kids, and I had thirty-two yesterday. Um, so we've had a lot of them, with that comes lots of other challenges, but we're just focused on getting through the two hours after school and the ten hours on Friday and hoping that we're not all crying by the end of the day, but other than that, that's really all I've got going on.
What kind of hours do you need somebody to work?
Um, so the position is a part-time position throughout the school year, so it's from three o'clock to between five thirty and six, Monday through Thursday. And then a ten-hour day, seven thirty to five thirty on Fridays. Um, we are open during most school breaks, so it increases to like a full forty-hour week during school breaks.
Oh nice.
Four days, yeah, Monday through Thursday during school breaks, and then um, they stay on with us for the summer, so it turns into a full-time hours during the summer, which averages between ten and twelve weeks during the summer.
So that during the breaks would be the full ten day?
Yeah.
Ten hour days?
Yes. Yes, and it's not all breaks, um, we do, we, we close during Thanksgiving, um, like the school closes that one week, so we do take that week to kind of regenerate as much power as possible, and we only operate a portion of our uh, Christmas break, but we do operate during the full spring break and as much as of the summer break as possible.
Anika, why don't you ex- um, explain a little bit the challenges you're having because of lack of staff on Fridays and what we may have to consider?
Um, so Fridays have really thrown us for a loop, um, two of the staff members that we hired, uh, within like the last two months are attending college and there was no way to rework their schedules, once those are set, we couldn't move anything around, so I have three staff members until noon on Fridays. Um, so if somebody gets sick, we have to close cuz I don't have enough staff, um, I have a staff member out this week. Tomorrow, I'm crossing my fingers cuz I'm getting a third AmeriCorps member to help us out on, on Fridays that Jesse and I can manage. What will be there for us when we open the doors, but the problem um, I'm starting to face, and it's never been a problem before, is the hours. And it's just not enough for people to survive on, so they are looking for a second part-time job to um, supplement income because our part-time hours are not enough and they end up finding full-time positions and I don't blame them because you can't, you can't raise a family on what we're able to give them. Um, but my biggest challenge is Fridays, if I don't have enough staff and I don't feel like Jesse and I are gonna be able to manage, or if Jesse or I, either of us are going to be gone, then I have to do an emergency closure, um, the facility can't operate with one of us being gone, um, one of us has to be in the facility at all times. And so, like I had a staff member out this week and I just got his, um, his doctor's note, he can't come back until Monday, um. And then I have, like I said, my staff that are going to college can't come in until noon, and so we're crossing our fingers that we can manage tomorrow. Um, but I did put a note out to parents to let them know that I really need reliable staff. Um, everybody thinks they have what it takes to do the job, but they need to fully understand, our kids, they're really rough around the edges, they, it takes a lot of energy to make it through the day, and we need a lot of support from parents to help us enforce rules and keep these kids on a straight track. Um, so that's really been pushing people to the limit and they realize it's just not for them, but we're getting, we could potentially be put in a position where we can't offer a Friday program if they don't have the adequate staff to run the program. Volunteers are great, but they don't count towards my staff-to-child ratio unless they go through all of the training that a staff member does. Um, and every time we hire somebody, it's costing me like a hundred and twenty dollars out of pocket just to get them started indoors. Um, and that's before they do any of the required training, that's just trails check and background check. Um, fingerprints, and then I, I've literally lost two people we've hired, I've submitted the trails check and scheduled their fingerprints, and the day that I submitted the trails check, they just didn't show up for work, so. Um, it's been really rough, it's rewarding after everything, you just have to make it through and over those challenges um, before you see the reward. Um, but it can be very overwhelming for people who are not ready for what our kids can dish out, so. Um, the kids in our community are very special, I tell people they're not like any child you were ever encounter in any other community, there's something about our kids that just makes them extra special and they deserve everything that we're able to give to them and all the extra help that we can put in because they matter and I just need some more adults to step up and wanna take on the challenge with us.
Appreciate what you do.
Thank you, and it's not just me, the school district, our teachers could use a huge thank you and a pat on the back too, cuz they're seeing it before I see it in the evening. So if you do see any of our teachers in the school district, give them a high five. Send some extra coffee their way, anything to help us make it through. Have any questions, other questions for me?
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna go with the Sky High report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Um, members, we're just trucking right along, um, as of right now, we have thirty-two events scheduled for this month. Um, we're on track to have uh, twenty-six events for October, um, and as of this afternoon, we have four hundred and fifteen events already registered for this year. So we're, we're tired, talking right along, um, we still got three more months. Um, we just had our first car show last weekend. Um, so it was held inside the event center. Um, they had somewhere in the range of about fifty vehicles between cars, trucks, motorcycles and bicycles. Um, which seemed to be pretty well attended and we'll see how we go from there with the next car show. Um, some of our upcoming public events are the powwow that is this weekend, so Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Um, they have royalty from all the tribes coming down. Um, they have PBS coming to show us, um, a TV series about buffaloes that hasn't even been aired yet, so we'll be the first ones to view this. Um, and then they are also live streaming the event to multiple countries throughout the weekend, so. Supposed to be a pretty big event, so if you have some time this weekend, stop on by and check it out. Um, they're doing dance competitions, drum circles, all kinds of amazing stuff. And then, if you're not tired, uh, next Wednesday, the circus is coming back to town, um, so we'll be back outside in the arena on the twenty-seventh. Um, show starts at seven, but come early, the, the seats filled up quickly last year, so. Come see us, um, right now, we're just trying to get through our events, um, working on a few improvement, improvements for the building. Um, and eventually, we'll get to the point where we can host our own events, we're just not quite there yet. You know, just a little bit more time of the day. But yeah, that's all I have for you, any questions?
So the number of events, you say the four hundred and some is for the whole year?
That's for twenty twenty-three.
And how are you booking on twenty twenty-four?
I did not look at those today, uh, we booked several events, um, I think the last time I counted, we were at fifty, but I know I've booked more than that since then, so. Um, we're quickly filling up for twenty-four and I already have requests for twenty-five.
Very good, anybody else? Thank you, Stephen.
Elder planning. You had your turn.
One more thing, DJ knows. I uh, really cannot sit down without mentioning Yvette Atencio, uh, with the Laura Foundation. She has helped us tremendously, um, the pride that the kids now have in their uniforms. Every single team after this year will have new uniforms and uh, I would be way over budget and probably fired by Gigi if it wasn't for the Laura Foundation, especially with our increase in numbers. She has come through huge for us and the cheerleading uniforms are, uh, if you've seen our football team, they have brand new uniforms. Um, and that, and then uh, baseball uh, is getting new uniforms. Uh, also, hopefully, we're putting in a, a grant for our uh, volleyball and our uh, women's basketball. What she did by the uh, soccer goals, and that is all due to the Laura Foundation, and she's done an awesome job and just supported us in any and every way that we've wanted support and gone overboard, um, with her support as far as funding goes for our different teams and that. Uh, we couldn't do the recreation without the increase in, with the increase in numbers that we have in every single sport. It's helped me out tremendously, uh, and, um, so thank you for that. I have to sneak out now and go see about volleyball, your team. Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Are all these uniforms that you're getting, that's so wonderful and thank you. Are we able to locally source those or are we having to order through?
We're trying to locally source them, but it's, we're having difficulties doing that, so a lot of it, yes, we are looking for, but we're having to go outside and.
Is that just vegetarian? No, okay.
But yeah, we have to go outside.
Okay. Thank you.
Don't thank her.
Well, thank, thank you for trying, thank you for funding it and thank you for trying.
Sorry, DJ.
Last time tonight, I promise. Good evening, alright, so been busy the last couple of weeks since I seen you guys last, I think I'm here at every single council meeting recently, which is kinda nice cuz we're getting a lot of cool things done. Um, we have two new hires since the last time I was here, one of them is Xavier, who you just met, the second one actually starts next week. And that'll be Robin Myers Associates, um, kinda helping us with the admin side of life. Um, trying to keep up on all of the administrative constraints that come with the additional funding and things that we've been doing and additional tasks and projects we got going on. So she'll start uh, next week, which would be nice, um, on the projects. City Hall is, most of you guys got it to order from Gigi, um, is moving along quickly finally again, um, there was a little bit of a pause or wait for some things to come in, like some of the windows and stuff. Um, all the windows are in now minus one, which somehow or another got missed in the order, so they're got that on order of going in a couple of weeks. It won't stop stucco though, um, they put in enough, they did enough work, they need the stucco in around it. So the color code will start going on the next week and a half or so, and then electric will go in after that. Um, in two weeks, the P D side will get its fencing put in. Um, and it will have electronic motor and some other stuff that'll make it very user-friendly for the P D as well as anybody else that's using. Um, so that fence will go in in the next couple of weeks as well. Um, so we're kinda moving along that, I think we'll be done with that, probably in the next month, once we get through the ticket items. Um, some, all of the doors, every single door that was on the facility that's getting replaced, were all special orders cuz they were either not the right height, not the right width, they were not being made. So everyone of them was a special order, um, didn't increase cost cuz that was what was in the apartment, but that's taking a little longer for those to come in. So, um, again, we should get done in about a week or so, or I'm sorry, about a month or so for that, um. So land use, we did a public engagement, uh, this last couple of weeks, uh, we had a lot, we had some good engagement, we had some lack of engagement at times from some of the, the participants. But overall, we had some really good feedback, about seven or eight pages worth of notes, which I'm still reading through. Uh, once we get through all of those, uh, we're gonna do some specific phone calls to stakeholders, um, so that way we can get specific, specific input on, like our developers, our real estate agents, um, uh, are, we'll talk to county about some of the things that they've seen, um, just making sure we get as much input as we can, so that way when this is a done product, it's a done product. It's nice to see you guys, but I really don't wanna edit it over and over and over, I'm kinda done doing that. So landscaping code, we'll go into that same code. Uh, we're in the second revision of that, getting pretty close, we should be done with that probably next week or two. Uh, Willdan Consultants, which is doing our water meters, they came back, um, gave us some preliminary numbers. Um, they're finishing up their numbers, they're gonna get the pricing of the hardware, and then they'll be able to give us actual backhaul number, which we'll come see you guys with. Um, as everything's gotten more expensive, he wants to make sure he has the current costs. Um, but it's all looking like it will cash flow better than initially projected, um, so we'll, we should be good with that. Um, it should make you guys happy unless, um, input costs go up even more, if the equipment gets really expensive, but it's cash flowing well. TerraCon, which is working on our EPA grants for asbestos and other container abatements at City Hall and a few other properties. Uh, moving along quite well, talked to them today, they will be able to submit the grant to the EPA, um, as soon as this cycle, or as soon as that cycle opens. Continuing getting a lot of interest from, uh, commercial and home builders, um, I've talked to developers, probably, I'm averaging about one week or so, that's interested in either building a home, building multi-family home, or building commercial property here in town, so we've, we're seeing a lot of really good stuff. Um, land value is going up, we've had some really expensive land go out, which is kinda nice, um. Working on a couple of grants, as usual, one for water storage, uh, and two for planning parks and fields. Uh, we still have three planning grants out, one is four hundred thousand for planning on Sherman and the trail. One is for three hundred sixty to do improvements on a road, as well as uh, a grant writer to fund the improvement once we get the plan done. And then one is a one point zero two million for alleys. Uh, we'll get those hopefully in the next little bit. Uh, last week, we got notified, we got a million dollar grant to spend on the urban canopy development. Uh, so we'll start executing on that as soon as we get the funds in the next, uh, probably beginning of next year, uh, so when those will drop. Next week, I'll be headed to the American Planning Association Conference, as well as sitting on the board for the model code, uh, development for Dole or land use. Um, so Dole's going through and doing their land development, it's like we're doing ours. Um, so they asked me to sit on that, so I'll be going and doing that. And that's it. Questions? Awesome, thanks guys.
City attorney.
Also, city councilman, mayor, um. I'll start out with uh, municipal court. Uh, we had around fifty-five cases on the docket, uh, this was a big day. Uh, and uh, after this, uh, the judge and I sat down and uh, tried to define our procedures a little bit, uh, that make a little more sense, it doesn't make sense for the city attorney to be involved in uh, somebody going thirty miles an hour and twenty-five, so that's really kind of civil in nature and so actually an infraction and the judge is able to handle that. And also the reviews, uh, she's able to handle the reviews, which frees me up to the offenses. And I need to have more time to sit down with the uh, people that have been charged with the offenses, uh, there's some offenses on the traffic code that are serious offenses, um, and we have just a lot of miscellaneous other offenses that I've gotta sit down with the defendants and, um, uh, sometimes negotiate a plea, but sometimes, uh, show them the, uh, the police reports, uh, so that we can arrive at a plea that is acceptable to the city and that goes to the necessary um, uh, elements of the offense that they committed, that type of thing. Uh, so, uh, we're gonna institute this, uh, I'm coming earlier to court uh, so that we can get on top of the people that are coming there and when people come into court, um, they may be, uh, coming in at different times. And it's such a fluid process where the judge is necessarily having to jump around on the docket because she picks whoever is there before her. And that's when we've got to rearrange our files more and quickly. Get that person into the room to talk to them about their case and where we're going with that case. And see if we can work out a plea because otherwise you'd have these cases mounting up tremendously. And we, we'd never get on top of it. So I think that's working better. We're going to start trying this officially in the next session. We did, we did it mostly in this past session, but now we're kind of instituting this type of decision making on those cases. Since we met last time, I told you that I was working on the zoning code under chapter twelve and answering questions and comments which were posed by our consultant Neil Putnam and by DJ. And we finished that. And my, my answers to those questions consist of thirty-five pages. I didn't, and to understand the parameters of that, the draft of DJ's was I believe about a hundred and fifty pages and of Neil Putnam's close to a hundred pages. He was combining the, and this is one thing we're having to think about too. Rather than just the zoning code, there are other things that are related to that, which are the subdivision regulations. And right now they're in a separate chapter. Placing those all together in one land use code and even incorporating the dangerous building code into that. So to understand my comments, my comments are answering DJ and Neil. And you're going to need to, to look at all three to make sense out of it because I'm having to just pinpoint mine to theirs. Also, we've got the component. I haven't received any further input yet from the community input. I assume that DJ will be giving me what he's got there. And that's a component we got to build into the whole thing too. I think where we are with a lot of that is the repositioning of things in the code so that it flows with what actually occurs when somebody comes in, picks up the code. Right now you see, for example, the the variance provisions toward the front of the code and the board adjustment provisions there. And you see the district provisions that show you what you can and can't do way further than that. So somebody that sees that, they're thinking first of all of the variance that they want to the code provisions and then they're finding out later on what the code provisions really say. So it's not, I didn't see any radical changes so far. But the repositioning of a lot of this is, I think, will help the flow of the code when somebody picks it up. And it's a project, it work in progress and it is, it, it, we got to fit all those components into the code to really streamline it. So that on my part right now is to fill up until I get more input to it. And I didn't want to clutter up your emails with sending you like two hundred pages materials on this, but if anybody wants to see that, just let me know and I will forward it to you. It shows what we've done so far. The, we've already covered cog. And we're giving a little help to some of our sister cities and instances. For example, and I think this helps everybody. We're sort of raising our boat there. When we have mutual cooperation between departments. An example of this was the other day when I received a email from Eric Chuiso, the city attorney in Alamosa. And you know, this Senate Bill two seventeen has made, has created a lot of issues for law enforcement. And everybody is trying to pinpoint fault in this kind of thing now and it's increased the tension, I think, that is placed upon officers. But we had an instance where Eric was requesting a review of a police takedown. And he went on listserv to do that and we brought in the, our use of force officer, Dave Pino, to sit down mutually together and review this. And then be able to respond to Alamosa that all this was proper, it was textbook. And I think it relieves a little pressure off that they do the same thing with us too and our officers. So cooperating in this manner. It also raises the level of knowledge of of what is involved in the present atmosphere, I guess you'd say, of police work. And it's, it's, it's a tough atmosphere right now. So I think that would help. And today we were, a lot of you, some of you were at the CIRSA luncheon. And I think that Sam Wyatt emphasized the kind of situation that's creating more expenses for the city and more liability for the city in a lot of areas. And I think there was a lot of that that really was aimed at the increased liability because of law enforcement, what they're having to go through. So that was, that was a good thing to, and there CIRSA has been an enormous help in the network there. And we're beginning to talk also more with Robert Cheesely, the CML legal counsel right now on different issues. So we've got a good network going and a lot of support out there. Seth and I both will be going to the municipal attorney's training session in a couple of weeks. And I've mentioned that to Gigi already, which is over in Christi. Let's say annual training session for municipal attorneys. So a lot of things happening, a lot of things in the middle. And just keep at it, I guess, right now. Anybody have any questions?
I do not. Anybody else?
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Jean.
Sitting man here. Because we know you have been busy.
We've got a busy crew, that's for sure. I want to acknowledge Commissioner Glover here in the audience. Thanks, Jean. We've been working on a couple of projects with the county as well. And so having some meetings with them and trying to work out the details. So I appreciate that relationship and that partnership. So thank you. Stephanie kind of brushed on it. But she and I met last Friday with Mark Bergoff, who was the civil engineer on Sky High for the air conditioning and the heating system. And the conference side of Sky High is regular air conditioning. The event center side is on, what do you call them?
Swamp cooler.
Thank you. Swamp coolers. And in our discussions with him, the swamp coolers are undersized for what he thought the building was going to be used for. So now with the type of events that we are having and the number of people in them, the system just cannot keep up, keep it cool enough for the audiences. So we're going to be pretty aggressive in working with him to get this resolved so that next summer we've got the air conditioning fixed or the swamp coolers fixed. And we'll provide more comfort then to those that are using the building. It's going to cost money, but we can retrofit, not really retrofit, but add to our system that's already in place. And then because of the one cent fund in place, we've got, got it in the capital funds that we'll be able to pay for it. But that's kind of the number one on the wish, wish we need to do for this or Sky High right now. So we also visited with Mark in regards to the generator project out there. So we're moving forward with it as well. Rob's taking the championship of it. And what we learned from, from Bergoff again is that his plans was to put the generator on the conference side. And and so it's been kind of wired that way. And I said, no, I want the generator on the event side. Because if there was an event where we had to, you know, bring in cots and actually house people, it'd be on the event, event side, not in the conference rooms. And so that was helpful to have that information. So we're looking at probably two smaller generators that would accommodate one for the event, one for the conference side, and then how it will all get tied together. We're also taking a look at, you know, the prefab shower building that we got the funding for. The bids are really expensive. It's like over three hundred thousand dollars. So what we're looking at is working with a construction expert to say, can we take the, what do you call it? The concession stand that's at the ball fields? So it's two stories. And can we convert that concession stand into the shower facility? Could have two handicapped facilities downstairs, two regular facilities upstairs. And that remodel would actually save some funding. So we're still, still all moving. We've got the maps out. We're working with Stampede. We'll soon have a meeting with the county, Stampede, the fair to kind of look at what's our desire on how the placement of the Sky High campus is growing. Got Xavier looking at helping us with some stuff so we can make sure that the RV spots are in a good location. And so it's, it's good and exciting stuff. You've probably, as you've driven through town, saw that the electric charging stations are getting in place. So that looks good. Rob and I met with contractors on that last week. And so hopefully they'll be operational in like another month, kind of, they thought, first part of November. So we'll have to do a ribbon cutting. Uh, let's see. DJ touched on the tree grant. But what I think is so cool about that, there were only eight cities in Colorado that received that grant. I don't know how many applied, but eight, eight got it. Montavista is the smallest community. And then the next size up was Glenwood Springs. So it's pretty cool that we were able to snag a million bucks. It will do, it'll look at our tree canopy that's through town. We'll be able to inventory all of the trees. We'll trim back what needs to be trimmed. We'll cut down what may be diseased or dying. And, and then plant one hundred trees each for the five years. So at some point, you know, once we figure out what city properties, maybe the school properties, where these trees will be located, then we'll come up with some sort of system to give them away. And so make sure you know, Suzie Q has a new tree in her, in her yard. And we can go forward from there. So I think that's going to be a really fun, fun project. The CIRSA luncheon that some of us attended today had some sobering news with, with their comments. Jean touched about the law enforcement side, but the, the kicker for me is the insurance. You know, our property insurance will go up seven point four percent. Our automobile damage reports or insurance rates will go up eleven point four percent this year. And then we don't, CIRSA doesn't do our health insurance, where we're expecting a spike in health insurance. And so, you know, that just all takes away from getting to do other things and, and it's just tough that that part of our, of us doing business. Gail and Martha and I attended the CML sub- meeting last week in, in Alamosa. And kind of got the latest update from Robert Shealy, who was the CML attorney. He talked a lot about proposition HH and I had it on the agenda today because I, I wanted you guys to all think about taking an official stand, either opposing it or supporting it. But I feel like it's gotten a little complicated and I don't have all the information that I, I want to have to feel comfortable with talking to you all about it. It's not in our best interest as government. It's going to take away, it's going to be, could potentially be really hurtful for the counties. And you know, county government, their primary income source is income or is property taxes. So we will be discussing that later in the future. Wanted to give you a reminder that we've got two budget work sessions, October ninth and October tenth. We'll split up the department so you guys aren't, you know, spending hours going over all of that. I'm working with staff right now as we come through those, but we'll meet both the ninth and the tenth here at City Hall at five thirty. It's homecoming weekend, so there'll be a lot of kids running around. We've got the powwow this weekend. Should have beautiful weather. Questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you for all you do.
You bet.
Thank you for keeping this topic.
Yeah, thanks.
Council committee, city commission, and reports. Once we're locked.
Just wanted to touch again at the CML meeting and the CIRSA meeting this morning. Both were extremely informational and just things that we don't often think of every day. And sometimes things that don't even come up in these meetings. But we need to be aware of them. And so those meetings are very important. The information that's given out is very important. And I enjoy going and I mean, yes, it's a little extra to do. And yes, this month it's a little heavy and as Gigi said, we're underpaid. But I don't think anybody sitting at this table is doing it for the, the big bucks. So doing it because we love to serve. I want to remind you of the vibe meetings that the Optimistics do, very important business engagement. This used to be something that was put on by another agency and it was very well attended. And it was the businesses getting together and just networking, solving problems, congratulating each other. It was what small towns and small town businesses were meant to be, which is working together, networking together, working off each other. I would like to see, it would be, I want to encourage business owners or citizens, just residents that just kind of want to know what's going on, to please come to these meetings. They've been at different times. No time, no date suits everybody. So they, at a meeting discussed what time is best for actual business owners in, in Montavista. Most of the, most business owners are working during the day. And many of them work by themselves, so they don't get a lunch break. So lunch is not a good time. They chose Friday at five. They chose Friday at five and it's at the theater. Again, I realize that Friday at five is not good for a lot of us in this room as far as staff and council goes. But I would ask that you put out the extra effort because this, our businesses are our backbone. So we've got to support them. And the best way they can be supportive is to support each other. Nonprofits, Anika needs people, you know. If we can get enough people coming to these meetings, maybe she can find her people. I don't know. Or maybe the people that are looking for her can find her there. Not everybody knows that she has this need and I'm just, I'm not picking on you. I'm just using this as an example. This is a dire need. If they have to close down on parties, what are those parents of those seventy-five kids supposed to do? Do they miss work? I don't know. I don't know what they're faced with, but it's not a good situation. So anyway, consider going to the vibe meetings, consider promoting them, talking about them. Get there and let's build this up to what our business networking was just a mere. Five, six years ago. It wasn't that long ago. It was just kind of falling flat. So let's try to raise that up a little bit. Other than that, I'm looking forward to the powwow this weekend. Um, the ball at homecoming tomorrow night. There's a big ball game tonight too. Wouldn't be there, but need to be here too. If you haven't gone and, and watched the, our youth play ball, they're, they're amazing and they just put everything they've got into it. And it's just exciting to watch. And my, one of my granddaughters is a little cheerleader. And she's much like me. When the other cheerleaders step right, she steps left. Um, when their pom poms are up, hers are down. She knows the steps. She's just doing them her way. So that's, you know. But she beams just as brightly when everyone applauds. And so all, all the heart is there. So I want to really support that. Um, other than that. I spent the day in Montavista today. I spent the day downtown. Talking to business owners, talking to pastors by, talking to residents. And uh, people are really starting to see. The work that's been going on for the past two to three years, but it's now starting to become apparent. To the people in the community and that's exciting. So. Let's just keep on moving, moving forward. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilor Howard? Yeah, I just uh. Echoing what Martha said, you know, the Circa meeting today was. Quite informational. I mean, uh, the issue with law enforcement in the state is, is disaster. I mean, Gigi talks about it. I mean, you're saying whether it's the insurance companies or, or law enforcement themselves. It's an untenable situation that somehow. And, and we in Montavista can't change it ourselves, but somehow it's gotta be fixed. That, you know, CML, Circa and others in the state can figure out a way to, to fix this disaster. That that's what it is. So I was very, very informed. I, I appreciate the heads up. My downer comment for today, I don't know.
It's an opportunity. Make things better.
That's it, Mr. May. Thank you, sir. Councilor Redd.
I want to thank the Lord Foundation for everything that you do for the community. I think it's amazing, you know, just can. Reiterate what, emphasize what uh, Durbin said. It, it's amazing to see the pride that these little guys walk around with and they play with and just good to, to be able to see them. Appealing, you know, it's awesome. So thank you. Thank the Lord Foundation. Uh, want to thank the teachers, um, not just in Montavista, but throughout the whole. Place that we live on, the whole planet, you know what I mean? Because. I've dealt with a lot of children in my service, you know what I mean, that I've done and, and it's not easy. So uh, thank you, Nika as well. So just want to give a shout out to all the teachers out there. So. And then also to the staff that keeps this place going. So thank you, Gigi, and thank, thank you, Jean, and thank you, Nita. And the rest of the staff. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Welcome to Montavista. Hope you get a nice coat.
Can we have some paperwork so we can apply to getting the coat?
Need to fire though, right?
No, it's working now. Um, I'll back to what these two said about the meeting today. I've always been a strong backer of the blue. Strongly. They are here for a reason and their hands have been tied. And it's unfortunate that it comes from. Way above here, Denver, Washington, for what they have done to this country and it's, it's sad because you have. Guys that choose guys and girls or, excuse me, young ladies that put their life on the line. Every day. Make sure that we're all safe. And we got people that are tying their hands where they can. They're concerned about. Their job. They're concerned about their own personal being because of the way rules have changed. And it's very sad to me to think that. People are willing to give up their life to protect us and then. They have to question what they're doing. So. That's, that's wrong in so many ways, but that's definitely, it's gonna take. But it was Jean said, was we get a group together and build a group and then maybe we can make a statement and change someone. I'd like to, one, Margaret, we missed you.
Sorry, the dogs got picked up too late.
But uh, thank the staff, um, the staff of the city of Montavista. You guys have made our jobs a lot easier. And decision making and everything because of what you bring to us as well as Jean. So again, I appreciate that. So uh. I had a community member from Alamosa. At a community gas station here just a few days ago and complimented Montavista. On their stance of what they've done. With the fact of Gigi and the chief being here as well as everybody else, but he said, you guys are making a statement. And we see it in our other communities. He said he was very pleased and proud of Montavista for what just they're doing. So pass the good news on. Follow up a lot of negative. So with that, we will adjourn the meeting with Monty Strong. Thank you all for being here tonight.
Make sure you all just go like this.
If you're in the meeting till October second?
No.